We're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. Um, can I get someone to make a motion to review?
And accept the agenda, please?
I move.
Okay. Second?
Thank you, Natalie. All of those that accepted and approved the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Great, thank you. Communications with parents, citizens and staff. Um, I haven't heard anything, but do you want to talk about the reach out? The board reach out communication part?
Uh, sure. We, um... I'll share my screen. Where's my share my screen? There we go. Um... We talked about this a little bit at the end of last year. Um, we were paying around fifteen thousand dollars annually to the Let's Talk group, um, to basically be our clearinghouse where if someone had an issue, and we know that there were an awful lot of people who just emailed or called or walked into the building, so it wasn't necessarily, um, the best use of our, um, funds. However, there are definitely people who want to be anonymous, need an opportunity to be anonymous and/or can't necessarily come into school or want to pick up the phone. So, um, we, if you look up, uh, there, you'll see right here we have a button now called Reach Out, similar to Let's Talk, not so similar that it will get us in a lawsuit. Um, but so this is, um, a program that our folks have designed internally. It's free, so, and it follows the same sort of things. We push this out to staff, um, to students, to parents. So you would go in there and it basically populates in exactly the same way that Let's Talk did. Um, so you can say, "I want to talk to the superintendent, a specific school, the school board." Um, and there also are places where, for instance, someone can report bullying in an anonymous way, um, which the law really asks us to do. Um, and then I will show you, at this point, and August is certainly a little bit slower of a month. Um, all right, there we go. This is our RNESU Reach Out summary report for the month of August. Um, and so we track it by who are they reaching out to, um, the number of submissions that each place gets. Um, and then we also track the response time. Um, and I get copied into all reach outs as well. So, for the month of August, we had ten. Um, and our average response time, um, was nineteen hours.
Where can we find the button?
Yes. Um, on the website, you'll see it right at the, right off on the front page. There's a little, if you scroll, Reach Out.
Okay.
Do you have to go to the OVU?
Nope, you can, and every school has their own. You can get Reach Out from everybody's page as well. It's a banner at the bottom. Right there. Uh, Reach Out should be right there. I don't know, yours is displaying it funny. Oh, you're OVU. Where are you at OVU?
And I need to be at our...
I'm sorry, what? I think she did. That's why I stopped screen sharing. It's just, it's on RNESUs and then, once you go into a schools, it'll like talk to the school.
Got it.
Um, so that's, like I said, a big cost saving and we still should be able to have the same response rate. The board can still get reach outs as well.
Great. Any other questions about Reach Out?
Great, thank you.
Yep. All right, moving on to consent agenda. Can I get someone to make a motion?
Sure, I make a motion that we approve it as is.
There a second?
I made the motion.
Uh, Fernanda.
Okay.
And then Natalie's seconding. So all of those that approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, next thing, Board Professional Development. Uh, we did, we are going to talk, have a discussion and debrief about our board professional development held on August twenty first, uh, twenty twenty-three. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about, uh, with what Pietro said? That have any questions or enlightening things that they didn't know before?
I didn't see that we, that he shared the materials.
He has not yet shared.
Okay.
Ah, okay. Well, we can pester him for that.
Yeah.
Hi Jasmine, you can come over here and sit with Brendan if you like.
Can I see the show up?
So, um, at this point, since Jasmine is new, I will stop where we are. Um, and we can just go around and introduce ourselves. So Jasmine Rivera is our new school board rep along with Brendan, who's old, so we don't care. Um, sorry, I'm just kidding. Anyway, so Paul, do you want to go around and just, um, say your name, where you're from, and, um, introduce yourself?
Okay, I'm Paul Lathrop, I'm from Pittsburgh, uh, at-large seat. Um, new to the board as well, a little bit last year and then coming into this year. Welcome.
Um, Brett Mullin, uh, rep from Pittsburgh. Been on the board for about a year.
You don't have to just say how long you've been on the board. You can say anything you like.
I've got some kids in the schools. My daughter just started near middle school, so she's, it's been new, been interesting. It's, it's like funding out and interacting with the school and not just the rest of the school.
I'm, uh, Brendan McLaughlin. I'm the senior student representative on the school board now and I am the class of twenty twenty-five class president.
Woo-hoo! Nice. It's your turn.
Oh, okay. Uh, hi, my name's Jasmine. Um, I'm a junior this year. Um, I'm in Broadcast Club. I do the, um, the yearbook. And that's really it.
Um, can you tell us why you wanted to join the board?
Yeah, um, I'm really interested sort of getting, um, to know the inner workings of the sort of school system, um, and also sort of what goes on behind the scenes that gives us the changes that we have today. So I'm, I'm pretty active in our school and so I would like to know what I'm, what I'm working for.
And you're the smart one.
Nothing.
Okay.
So a German politician named Bismarck said that, uh, laws are like sausages and you didn't really necessarily want to see how the sausage is made. Uh, so just be warned. Uh, my name's Kevin and I'm, uh, I'm from Brandon. And, yeah, that's probably half the name.
Um, I'm Lori Bertrand. I'm from Sudbury. I am the board chair. So if you have any questions, other than talking to your esteemed colleague there or Kristen, you're more than welcome to reach out. Um, and I have graduated one kid from here and I have Jordan, as you know, is just junior and David is a ninth grader.
Kristen Hubert, superintendent.
Hi, I'm Fernanda Canales and I, um, have two children who graduated from here to grown people now that, one of them was on the yearbook for many years. So, and, um, let's see, I represent Goshen and I was in the school system for, here in Rutland Northeast for sixteen years and then in, um, Addison Central for another sixteen years. And I just retired as a, as an educator after thirty-nine years.
Hi, I'm Natalie Steen. Um, I've been on the board two, maybe three years. Um, feels like forever. I have four boys, um, three at Otter Valley, one at SBB still. Um, yeah, that's it.
Hi, Charlene Bryant. I'm the recording secretary forever. I've been doing this for many years. Um, my main job is at Middlebury College in the admissions office. Um, oh my, my husband was the second graduating class from Otter Valley. Um, I just, um, put, uh, together a three-day fiftieth anniversary, uh, reunion for my class of nineteen seventy-three. Um, we graduated four children, three grandchildren. So they're all gone now. We're, I'm done except for recording.
And you have Barbara.
Oh yeah, Barbara, can you?
Yeah, hi, uh, welcome Jasmine. Um, I'm Barbara Ebling. Um, I've been on the board, I don't know, six or so years. I'm, uh, the at-large rep from, but I live in Brandon, as you know, because I see you pretty often here at the bookstore and welcome to the board.
Great, and I think Greg Bernhardt is on there too, but he's on a tractor and can't talk. So I'm sure he says hello. Um, but, and there's a couple of other board members that are not here as well, but we'll get you introduced to them at our next meeting, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for wanting to join us. Okay, so back to our regularly scheduled broadcast here. Um, we were reporting out on our, um, discussion and debrief of the board PD held on August twenty-first. So, anybody have anything to say?
I thought there was a lot of really helpful information.
There was, um, there definitely was.
I think it would have been good, you know, when we first came in as board members to get some of that. I don't know if there's like a way to condense it down.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we would like to kind of do that. Um, I was talking with, um, Jess, who is our Barstow board chair, and also talking to someone else who, um, oh, I know who it was. It was, um, Debbie Zingizer, who used to be the board chair, um, for Barstow. And she's now working for VSBA and wanting to learn how to help on boards people. And so that might actually be one of the things that she can help us with. So, yeah, that's a good idea.
It'd be nice to have the materials so that if we need to refresh, we can.
Yeah, absolutely. So we will ask for that again. I don't know about you, but I wasn't quite ready for school to start. So... So, and so nothing that reached out and grabbed you and made you think twice? No? Okay. I was just listening, so I wasn't actually there taking notes, unfortunately.
I think there was new stuff.
There was definitely some new stuff.
I just can't remember at the top of my head right now. It's the heat.
It is the heat. It is the heat. All right, well, maybe what we'll do is, once we have the, um, the materials, maybe we can revisit this again. All right, sounds good. All right, moving on, Board Monitoring Report, three point one, Unity of Control. That should be in your packet. I have no idea what page. Um, the Board Monitoring Report that is in your packet is the one that we approved last year. So I'm hoping that you've read it and, um, know any changes that you want to make for this year, if any, other than the date.
Page twelve is the page you want.
Okay, page twelve, thank you.
Do you have them out right there possibly? I can't print anything off my printer at the moment. Oh, there it is. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about?
You most certainly can, yep.
So, number one, the, the second set of boxes, it says, um, based on the work plan that was created during the board's retreat this year, these items will be added to the agendas. Are we gonna review or revise that work plan?
Um, it's later on tonight.
It's later on.
Yep. Most of the work plan is, um, already filled in, just because it's stuff we do all the time. But we do have to talk about what our, um, objectives are this year. And that will, that will have to come into our work plan. So yes. Since we didn't do that at the retreat. Okay, so as far as I can hear, I don't hear any changes from any of you. Does someone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor of three point one, Unity of Control, for the time period nine twenty-two through, uh, nine twenty-three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so the next one, we are moving into governance process. This one is the Tax Revenue Anticipation Note Cash Flow Loan. And you should have gotten some new information about that today from Melinda. Um, can someone make the motion and then we can talk about it?
I move.
And you do have to read it.
What am I reading?
Um, the authorize a tax revenue anticipation note. It's, what's in italics there on the?
On the agenda.
Yeah, on the agenda.
All right. So I move to authorize a tax revenue anticipation note cash flow loan from Community Bank per the cash flow statement in the amount of one million nine forty-seven thousand four forty-three, maturing on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the whole thing.
Yep.
And authorize Superintendent Kristen Hubert to sign loan documents on behalf of the OVU USD board. The bank offered two, I think that's it.
Keep going.
Oh, the bank offered two options, one, fully dispersed loan with an interest rate of three point two five percent with proceeds to be held in an investment account bearing interest at the rate of three point seven percent and two, straight line of credit with an interest rate of four point two five option.
Um, so you have to tell us which option you want us to approve.
I do two. Option two is approved.
So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
So I just need a second just to talk about it. All we're doing is talking about it.
Seconded.
Thank you. Okay. So the reason, um, I'll give a little bit of background on this because I talked to Brenda about this at large. The reason I said option two, so we do this every year. We always get, um, a note to, in case, um, we're not going to get taxes in time to pay payroll. And so that's always an important thing. So we do this tax anticipation note. Um, this year was the first time that the bank offered two options. Number one was the option about giving the, us the entire loan amount that we were requesting, which is that one point nine blah 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 number, at a four point, or a three point two five percent interest rate and that whatever we weren't using at the time, they would, um, give us interest at three point seven percent. The second option is what we always, most always do, which is a line of credit. And so they give us the line of credit of one point nine blah 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 number and we only paid four point two five percent interest on the amount that we use. Now, in the past three or four years, we haven't ever used it. And Brenda's not sure that we'd actually use it again this time. It's just in, in case taxes don't come in at the prescribed time, for whatever reason. So we're just doing this to make sure that we can pay our bills, essentially, and pay our people. So the reason that we are saying stick with the line of credit at four point two five percent is because essentially we don't want one point nine million dollar loan out there, even if it's only a three point two five percent. Um, because I don't think it's gonna, I don't think we're gonna use it anyway. It would be much better if we used a line of credit. If we use three hundred thousand of that, we're gonna pay four point two five percent on three hundred thousand and we're done. So that is my little spiel. Questions?
If we don't use it, we're making point four five percent interest on roughly two million dollars.
Yeah, but again, it, it's a lot of extra paperwork and Bill Dick, who is also our treasurer, said not, it was not an option that he felt comfortable with.
If we did make interest, what happens then?
If we did make interest?
Yeah, yeah. We wanted option one and the, and the money's not spent and there's revenue from?
Then it's just interest income.
Okay, then where would that go?
It would just go into the, into the general fund. Yep. Yep.
Do you feel, do you know or feel comfortable, um, explaining Bill's reasoning?
Um, well, I think Bill's reasoning was is that we don't want them to give us one point nine million dollars of money. And then, um, and even if it's a three point two five percent with this, it's, it's kind of like a sweep. So you know, you don't use it, and so whatever you're not using, you're earning interest on, one point nine million dollars. But again, it, we probably aren't going to use it. And the other part of it is, is it, it's going to be such a short term anyway that we're not going to make much of any interest on it at all.
Okay, thanks.
So that's kind of where he was at.
Is it for one year?
Um, the, yeah, although once we get tax money in in the fall, we don't use it, um, for the rest of the year. We've never used it at the end of the year, let's put it that way. Other questions?
Makes sense to me. It's like a backup plan.
It is, it's just a backup plan. That's really, really what it is. Okay, so, do you want to read the motion again?
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's see. A motion was made by Fernanda Canales and seconded by Kevin Thornton to authorize a tax revenue anticipation note cash flow loan from Community Bank per cash flow statement in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars, maturing on June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and authorizing Superintendent Kristen Hubert to sign loan documents on behalf of the board. The board offered two options, one, fully dispersed loan with an interest rate of three point two five percent with proceeds to be held in an investment account bearing interest at rate three point seventy percent and two, straight line of credit with an interest rate of four point two five percent. Option two, it is approved.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Why such an oddly specific figure?
Because that is the money to be raised by taxes. That's the, that, well, actually, no, that's not right. Um, I'm not sure where I went, Brenda, can you want to text her real quick where that number came from? I think it's a percentage, I think it's a calculation.
Okay.
But, um, we can verify that. Actually, I'll ask her. It is a very specific number.
So is it one twelfth of our total budget or something like that?
Might be one pers, ten percent? Does that make sense?
That makes more sense.
Maybe. It's more like.
Does it cover payroll?
Yeah, I think it was like twenty-four.
Is it just payroll? I mean, the actual line of credit document doesn't...
Doesn't indicate where it came from?
Doesn't say. It just says the borrower agrees to be liable for the sums, blah blah blah. Um, in anticipation of the collection of taxes and receipt of other revenues for the fiscal year.
It's probably a percentage that we're locked.
Yeah, I think it's a percentage.
It doesn't matter. I, I was just curious.
Yeah. I've asked her, if she answers back, I'll, you know.
She's at the office.
Okay. So, um, all of those, um, that agree with the motion on the table, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's see. All right. Our next, um, item is to set board annual goals. Um, specifically, let's talk about the opportunities and challenges to the OVU board and then, um, maybe we can set some annual goals around it. Uh, here's Brenda's answer. "We prepare a monthly cash flow statement based on the prior year timing of deposits and disbursements adjusted for known changes." So it's a month. It's one month of expenses. Is that okay to everybody?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so, opportunities and challenges to OVU U.
Well, our, our challenges in many ways remain the same. Um, our test scores are bad. Our reputation is, is, at least on sites like Zillow, is bad. Um, we've got a lot of poverty in the district. We're still, uh, in a very slow recovery from COVID and when it comes to student behaviors and, um, I'll just leave it at that. Uh, and, you know, all of our efforts should be to improve those situations. I also have specific goals in mind, as, as always. I want to advocate for, uh, tech ed and for, um, alternative forms of education because I don't believe we're going to get most of our kids to read To Kill a Mockingbird and write a paper about it. I, I think the, the, the challenges of the, of the present day and of the future require us to, to think past a mo, model of education that aims to get, uh, our kids into, uh, send them to universities primarily because most of our kids don't do that. And, um, and, and we have to think about the technologies and challenges of the twenty-first century. Big ideas there, but, um, throwing them out. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Communication.
Uh, is that a opportunity or is that a?
Challenge.
Challenge? Okay. Are you specifically saying board communication or are you talking about, um, communication?
Families.
Okay.
I mean...
We heard of that a lot last year for people. Communication and safety, I would say, were the two things that we heard the loudest.
Um, I will put down as an, I don't know that it's an quote unquote opportunity, but the one thing that we have going for us is that our, um, enrollment remains steady, whereas all other schools around us are dropping. So...
I think we as a board, an opportunity might be, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we're, we're really great at policy governance, if, if I'm being honest. I, I feel like we're always sort of like reactive or we're going through the motions, we're reviewing our policies, but we're really never bringing one forward for a specific reason. And I think as a board, we could be better about that. That's kind of what it's for.
So you want to bring policy governance for a specific reason?
Well, yeah, I mean, so, uh, for example, if we have fifty angry parents in here to discuss a safety issue.
Oh, then we should do a safety next one.
We should be talking about that policy, right? Something like that.
Okay. Someone responding to Brenda. Okay. Other things?
Well, Brett raised my second favorite topic, uh, which is, I think policy governance is a failure and that, that we need to, um, we need to seriously consider its many flaws, um, which we haven't done. And, uh, and that discussion's long delayed and very important.
I'm putting policy governance down as both a challenge and an opportunity. So, um, just on a...
That's how you get to be chair right there.
That's right, yeah.
I can hear you great, but this fan, if other people could speak up.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, can everybody just?
You're new, but...
That's because I always speak an octave above everyone else.
Yeah.
Sorry. So yeah, if everybody could just speak up for Charlene's sake. Okay, so, um...
I think a challenge last year too was discipline, school discipline, student mental health. I don't know if I love our discipline system and I know we're working on it. But I'd like to see, and that, that's not something we necessarily work on.
Right.
I'd like to see progress this year from...
Well, I think with the new safety director in place, that hopefully might happen. Yes, Kristen?
I mean, that is definitely.
That's the goal.
Intense. And also there's a coordinator of, um, school-based mental health because mental health is so short-staffed. We had so, many of the students who came before us or things, um, that happened were on waiting lists that were six months. Um, so this allows us to sort of prioritize high-needs students.
I think along the lines of what Natalie was saying, that I feel like I've noticed as a parent, is that I hear the policies here that are designed and then the way those filter down into like everyday activities at school, there seems to be some kind of disconnect and, um, that, put that into the, the challenge to the board too, into Kristen, is how do the, like, really great things that are designed get implemented? Like, I don't think that's an easy thing. I'm not suggesting, oh, just make a new policy and everybody will follow it. Um, but I think it, it plays out in discipline and all kinds of other places where there's, um, I think some really great policies in place, but then not everyone, um, adheres to the intent of the policies.
I, I mean, to follow up on that, I had a conversation with the teacher last week already about discipline, um, regarding my son and, and cell phone usage. And it's, we have a... and, and cell phone usage, and it's, we have a policy, but the implementation across the board is not consistent. So you're going to have issues with students who say, well, this teacher doesn't make me put my phone away, how come you make me put my phone away? I don't know how we fix that, but I think implementation, consistency with implementation, something that needs to be worked on.
That was a much better way to say what I was trying to say. I've seen inconsistency where like across teachers, the rules and policies of the district aren't uniformly followed.
I don't know if this is, I wouldn't say it's under the broad umbrella of mental health, but I think it's adjacent to it. I think we have a problem in our district, we're of, uh, losing kids at some point. This, Mr. Ruppel argues that it's junior high, that, that kids disengage, that they feel like school isn't for them, they feel like they're not getting anything out of this place, they develop a hostility to it. Uh, and it's very difficult to overcome that. Uh, so thinking about ways to capture kids when they're still innocent and eager enough to be, you know, capable of getting excited, um, and it's still cool to be excited, is, is, uh, a challenge that, that we have to work on, because we want our high schoolers to continue feeling that way, and, and too few of them do.
I think to expand upon what both Kevin and Jeremy said, I feel like it would be really helpful for us if there was a place or a time within our meeting to talk about just general things like that, because that's where we may say at our next meeting, we'd like to bring up a policy, you know? It'd be nice to just have a conversation about it. It, it's sort of like, unless we bring it up and bring it to you kind of offline, there's really no way where we can be like, oh, I, I heard this, or should we review it, kind of a, you know, so I'd like to see a little bit more of a formal way to kind of bring things forward. I know the schedule's tight.
I'm not saying, I'm just writing down what you said.
Though we couldn't vote on anything because of open meeting laws.
No, but we could discuss things.
Vote to discuss it officially and vote on it the next.
All you're, all you're asking is to bring something forward to the next meeting. But sometimes that stuff can be, you know, shuffled through me before a meeting happens, or, you know, it doesn't always have to happen at a meeting, sometimes it does happen at a meeting, we've done it before.
Yeah. I just think having a space where we could actually kind of just not focus on the policy and just kind of talk about other things going on, it might be helpful for that.
Like what other kinds of things, I guess, so.
Like, like what Jeremy just said with, you know, I kind of feel like, you know, the, maybe the policies aren't being implemented, you know, universally the way that we would like them to be, or, you know, something like that.
So, I, I'm not trying to disagree or anything like that, I'm just trying to think of times. I think those kinds of questions and things come up when we have presentations from, and presentations, um, Kristen has already come up with a bunch of them that she's hoping to have this year. Um, I think that's where we're going to ask those questions, because a lot of the things that you want to talk about, about things not universally being done across the middle school or across the high school for cell phone use, is not our purview. That's our purview. And so us talking about it, it's really not, it's not our, it's not our bandwidth, it's not our bailiwick.
Your bandwidth asks questions, Larry.
You get, absolutely, you can ask questions, yes, you most, absolutely can. But I'm just saying, as far as us discussing it at this juncture, we don't have any authority over that, that, that's Kristen's.
I, I, I recognize that it does open us up for a little bit of the circus act, if, if we kind of just have like a blank space on the schedule, but it also could be a time where, you know, like if I brought something up to you and you didn't necessarily see where there was space in the schedule, but we talked about it as a group and, you know, everyone was in agreement that we should talk about a policy, then that might be a, a better, and honestly, I would think easier for you to try to schedule things out. I would think that would be a better way to kind of just, you know, kind of talk about what's happening in real time, right? You know, there's things that come up throughout the year, and we're usually more reactive, right? We're waiting for someone to bring it to us, rather than us kind of bringing it forward ourselves.
Well, I also think that some of the times when we, and when we talk about, when we think about the things that are going on in the school that, you know, don't, we don't like, things aren't happening the way that we think they should, tho- those things are, are, tend to be things that Kristen has to take care of. And, um, you know, we can bring them up at a meeting, but we shouldn't be having a ten or fifteen-minute discussion about those types of things. Now, if we have a presentation about said thing that you're questioning, like cell phone use, you know, then yeah, ask away. Why aren't the, you know, why do the teachers have the ability to say, okay, yes, cell phone use is okay in my room for X, Y, and Z? Like, my kids have been in school for three days, I've seen three different syllabuses from my ninth grader, and cell phone use is all different. Yes, you can use it for work, yes, you can listen to music, no, you can't use it for music. I don't want to see it if it's, you know, unless you're using it for work. You know, so you're right, it's used, use is, is really up to the teacher at that point.
I guess that what I'm hearing is a little bit more coordination between policy presentation and discussion. And so I think if we make our tight goals of like, we want to talk about safety, we want to talk about, you know, like, if the goals are tight and things are aligned, then we have time to talk about and ask the questions we have. Sometimes the presentation may not relate to the policy that we're discussing, which then doesn't relate to the questions we ask, and I think maybe a little better alignment could help with that.
Yeah, or more dynamic, right? I mean, it's tough, and it's tough with the schedule, right? It's tough to be dynamic, but things come up throughout the year where they become a higher priority.
Yep.
Right.
And we have, and we have had those, so.
Well, and also, not everything that we discuss requires a motion. I mean, we can discuss it, but it's not up to us to make that change, right, to the cell phone policy. There's no cell phone policy to per- so, some of the things that happen, right? So thi- this is the interesting part, there's actually very, Rhode, Rhode Northeast actually has very few policies, because it's a policy governance system, right? Much of it is left up to the purview of the superintendent in the school. So many of the things that you're talking about or that you have questions about are in fact school-based procedures and/or sort of guided by admin memo. So I wouldn't know that there was an issue unless someone brought me an issue, and generally, when it comes here, most often times, it's about an OB procedure or practice, and so it is kind of hard to have those conversations. But if, if there was space to say, hey, we're really interested in, um, uneven, you know, enforcement of the cell phone rules at Otter Valley, that would give me an opportunity to go back to the OB principle and next month sort of report out on, hey, here's what I found, here's what I understand is the procedure and how they sort of, you know, but I, on the fly or in the moment, most times, I'm not necessarily aware of it, and I wouldn't be able to give you an answer at that point.
Well, that would be great, and having a space where that's available in our meetings, because those things, such things come up frequently. And in addition to the, the sort of administrative issues you're describing, you know, a really good example is we had this bathroom mess dropped in our lap last year. Maybe, I'm not blaming anyone for, for it dropping in our laps, it, it arose. And, uh, we, we have a very unwieldy system for responding to, to, to things like that. We did have fifty angry parents in here, uh, twice, uh, and they were angry for different reasons, and, um, uh, you know, all we did was sit here, and, and people expect us, rightly or wrongly, they expect us to be able to say, this is what we're going to do, we're going to react to this. And instead, nothing happens, and everybody winds up frustrated. Uh, in my opinion, that issue, I, I would kind of like to see it go away, but I don't think it's gone away, and it's likely to arise again, um, and probably at the worst possible time.
We did give a directive though, when they're working on it.
Yeah.
And.
They're getting busy.
But we were reactive, you know?
Well, we were reactive, because I don't think we realized that there was a bathroom issue, and two things happened at the same time that everybody thought were, were one thing, and it was two different things that kind of got everybody all sauced. And then when they realized it was two different things, then it turned into a safety issue. So, but, the other thing I wanted to mention on that was that if everyone remembers who was at the PD, Pietro very specifically said that during public comment, we don't respond. It's for them to have comment to us, we do not respond, because, and, you know, we can write it all down, we can bring it back, I can work, you know, look at it and see if we need to bring it to Kristen's attention, if we need to have a meeting about, our next meeting needs to meet about that, whatever. But unfortunately, that is, and, because otherwise, we open ourselves up to liability, according to Pietro, and he is our lawyer, so just be, just be cognizant of that, but that's all I want to say.
I also want to say something about the, um, the presentations. Um, well, I'm, this is my, entering my fifth year on the board, I think. Uh, and, uh, I, I, I'm increasingly finding the presentations more and more frustrating. Um, they, they're often extremely lengthy, I made the remarks last spring about the PowerPoint, bullet points, five trillion of them that go by incredibly fast. Frankly, I think they're way too often filled with happy talk, um, and, and we seem to wind up with five minutes to respond to them, um, and because we haven't had them in advance, it's very difficult to bore into them, uh, and say, this, this, and this seem problematic, or this, this, and this, or something we might want to expand on. Uh, that, that is the board's role, and, and it seems like that gets shunted aside for reasons of, you know, we got to get out of here. And I, I, I've, I've, I've found that frustrating from the start, and it's time goes on. Every time there's a presentation, frankly, at this point, I'm like, oh my God, we have to listen to twenty minutes of blah, 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 and nothing will come of it.
So maybe the opportunity is to create time limits on it.
I think brief, brief presentations with lots of room for questions is the way to go, thank you, yes.
Ten-minute.
I can already, I can already, I can already tell you that the presentations that are going to be coming down the pike in the next couple of months have been completely revamped, because I already pretty much said that.
Okay, let's break.
So, um, and not in those terse terms, but I did say, you know, that we need to be able to understand it, we, you know, we need it to be more interactive, so, and I think it will be, so. Um, not to turn us to a different direction, but one of the challenges that we face financially is that the Esser Cliff is happening this year. This is the, so, when we go to budget this fall, we are going to be making some very, very, very tough, um, decisions. Um, maybe the, maybe they will be making a lot of tough decisions, but we may have to make some tough decisions too. And, um, I know from being on this board for a very, very long time, the one thing we never want to do is cut programs. And, um, I am still of that, uh, logic. So, but we may have to cut some people and, you know, well, I know we have to cut some people. So, the question is where, especially when we're finally finding our footing and hopefully getting kids engaged again in learning, um, because as you indicate, we do have a lot of kids from poverty, we have a lot of kids whose parents aren't involved. That's the other thing that, that's a challenge. We need to get families involved in their, in kids' educations again, not just the kids, not just, not just teachers, but also the parents. Because that's when kids finally start thinking, you know, oh, maybe this is important, you know? We're all here because we want our kids to get a great education, we're behind them, hundred percent, I would think. But there's lots of parents out there that, that don't have the time, don't know how, and we need to be able to help them get behind their kids, so that they feel like they are worth it too. Because some kids don't feel that they're, they're worth, you know, they're just here to screw around and forget it. I don't, you know, eight hours, I'm going home. They're not worried about what's going to happen when they graduate. That's for, that's for later time to discuss.
Couldn't agree more. Unfortunately, we've mastered the art of getting them here when they're angry and fearful, but, uh, getting them involved when they're not is a challenge. There's a way to get them here.
Yes, sir. Derek's not here, so I'm going to act for him right now.
Okay.
And ask if we can hear the student representative's opinions on challenges and, uh, opportunities the board should be aware of.
Walking into school this year for the first day, um, I mean, and we had our assembly on Friday, it was, it seemed very refreshing and nice, and I thought that it definitely seems like after the first year of kind of finding his footing, Mr. Ruppel and new administration, they've done really good in, um, setting us up for success overall. I mean, there's definitely still a lot that we need to overcome, but personally, I feel more confident in our school this year.
I definitely, I second that, I feel like the, maybe it's just because I'm going into junior year instead of sophomore, so it's, you know, like, we've, we've been through this more than once now. Um, I feel like the atmosphere has changed so far, at least. I definitely notice a lot less people in my class, um, floating around, um, a, a lot less problematic elements, um, and I think that definitely has something to do with how, um, the administration has taken to correcting the behavior. But I do think that, um, I don't know, the phone policy was brought up, I do think that because it's so, because it really depends on the teacher, a lot of people are definitely in, they're very confused as to when they should have it, when they shouldn't, especially because Mr. Ruppel sort of blatantly said, this is when you can, this is when you can't, and still teachers, um, even, even in middle school, have their own opinions on it. And so I think just some miscommunication on the administration part.
Anyone else?
Um, sorry, just one question.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, not sure if it was brought up, if it was brought up at the August retreat, but the trailer, or the building out that, what, what, what's the status on that?
You mean like where is it?
Yeah.
Question one.
Yeah, okay.
The ghost trailer.
Yeah, I believe it's still on its way.
October, I think.
Yeah, October.
Okay. And is it going to be functional and used then, or?
Yeah, well, I think it, it just, it takes a little while, um, for them to hook it all up. I heard that by November, um, and I think it's going to be a health classroom, and, uh, they, I mean, they already have the spaces sort of designated.
They, I, I think you had known that they had planned on putting the alternative ed program out there in the trailers? That's what we had discussed.
There's going to be like interventions.
Yeah, and they're not anymore.
And they're not anymore, um, that's actually up at Otter Valley on North Campus.
Okay. What's the, the status of the trailer, and that should be, is that hooked up yet?
Yes, that's been, that's been in there for a while. Okay, so, from all of this.
Can I add?
Yeah.
This, um, in terms of opportunities and challenges from a policy perspective, I would be very interested in us as a board discussing whether we want to have any climate-related policies.
I mean, I'm coming here to that, Jeremy.
Climate-related policies.
Climate, climate.
I'm not suggesting any specific policies, but I would love the discussion about, um.
Environmental?
Yeah, yeah, like, uh, climate change.
Building pledges or something?
Specifically related policies. Well, it could be, I mean, that's the thing I'd love to have a conversation about. Um, in terms of the other side of that, is there's a lot of opportunities, and so, um, there's a state, uh, climate, I don't know, economy workforce development working group. Um, as an example, there's a lot of support and funding opportunities for some of the things I think we've been trying to do that I think we should keep an eye on. So specifically to Kevin's point of increasing tech ed, there's this, um, tons of, um, need for workforce development related to climate change, and there's a lot of state support and resources involved, and it's the kind of things that, it's jobs kids can learn to do and then leave school with a good-paying job that might engage them more in school.
Just please be mindful, and I, I, I'm not trying to be a pity party, but a lot of that stuff is for the tech centers, we are not a tech center, and we have to be very careful not to step on the toes of the tech centers when we look for those kinds of monies, because those are usually for Hannaford or for Stafford.
And why can't we, if they're service, so like Stafford, we got a report last year from Stafford that they cannot come near meeting capacity, why, why should we be in a position to say, well, let's continue a system that can't meet capacity, rather than trying to grow capacity here? Is there something legislating?
It's, it's legislative, it, uh, the tech centers and the. The tech centers are all law-related. And so we cannot change those laws. Our representatives could change those laws, but they are not, they have not been changed so that we could, if we were to step on their toes, they could come back and, and we could get in some major trouble.
So we can't do anything duplicative?
So, one thing that Devin has been very careful about doing and has, has been talking to Stafford and making sure that his programs kind of are feeder program into Stafford. So he can like introduce it, do that kinds of things. But he cannot start his own program necessarily that would compete with their program. Can't compete. So.
But I think there's a lot of room.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of room. The numbers last year, there was like 290 kids accepted to Stafford and like 630 that applied. I feel like it would be within our obligation to the students to see what we can do that would work rather than just try to be concerned with what we can't do. And that might mean talking to Stafford and saying, hey, you can't meet capacity. Can we fill some of that capacity? It doesn't have to be adversarial.
Well, we can definitely have a conversation with them if that's what you want to do. But I'm just saying that we have to be careful that we do not step on toes.
And we, we can't replicate their programs, like for a variety of reasons. And I would just say, what you're talking about feels less like a policy to me and more like an initiative for the curriculum instruction and assessment team to look at, right? Like to, to be very clear with Debbie Alexander and Mr. Ruppel, this is a path that we want our middle and high schoolers to take a look at. Where are our opportunities here? The foothills program, the alternative program that Mr. Ruppel just came up with for this year, is another opportunity for students to be able to have success in non-traditional ways. So I think that that's already sort of starting. I think just to what, you know, Brendan and Jasmine were talking about, they are a very new administrative team. They're just getting their feet under them. And I'm sure they would be happy to have those conversations. Mr. Ruppel is deeply committed to alternative pathways for students. And then the only other thing I would say is it, just so you know, it isn't really a 630 kids applied and only 200, and those were applications, many of them were students who applied to multiple programs, right? And so who maybe got into one and didn't, there, there weren't over 200 students turned away from Stafford for capacity. That's just a FYI. And we have.
No, that's good to know.
Yeah, and we have 57 students there this year. And I think we had very few who were turned away. And they were turned away for non-complete applications is my understanding. So OV kids did very well in the application process this year.
Is Melissa Connor scheduled to speak to us?
We didn't schedule her. We talked about it with her, and she said, talk to me in the fall.
Okay, I would, I think having a conversation with her would be fantastic. And it would go a long way to answering some of Jeremy's questions. Thanks for reminding me this, Jeremy. I think one of our opportunities, and it is tech-related, is Brandon is slowly becoming known as the birthplace of electric power in, in North America. And we, you know, we've, we've got the electrical devices curator from the Smithsonian coming to speak in Brandon in the next year. We've got Davenport Fest underway. The, the, the area and the schools can, I think, should be, and should be tied in with this, has an opportunity to, to, to create a space where we, we become a place where green energy, electrical innovation, electric power, all of those things, that we can become known for that. And without stepping on Stafford's toes, I think this is an opportunity for that to happen. And we should try to make it happen.
Not that I don't disagree with any of that. We just have to have the resources to make that happen. So you got to have the staff and the budget and.
Should we start by inviting in our legislative representation?
We can, we can talk to them, too.
Just about that, but I mean, with the Esser Cliff, it all, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of things we could talk to them about.
Usually we talk to them when they first start the session in January. But I could talk to Stephanie and see if she could pull them together sooner, especially before budget time, if you wanted, maybe next month.
Stephanie's very up to speed on the technical education stuff and on the, on the Davenport order story, too.
So if I invite them, I'm not just going to do reps, I'm also going to do the senators as well.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so after all of those lists of challenges and opportunities, we still need some goals.
So I have a question.
Yeah, go for it.
That may turn into a goal.
Yep.
And it's kind of two-pronged, right? So Kristen was talking about how we don't have that many policies. A lot of it's done at the administrative level, and that's fine. But I guess the question I have is, if something needed to be a policy, we don't have a good roadmap to like create a brand-new policy that I know of. And I'm new, so I don't know anything. But I feel like if I wanted to create a new policy, I wouldn't even know where to begin, right? So to me, that's, that, that's really bad for, for a board member to not know how to do that. And I guess part two or B of, of that statement slash question is, I look at what Barstow did with the preschool program, and I think, how did they do that? I feel like there's so much bureaucracy that is in the way at our meetings where I don't feel like we could ever do something like what they did.
I guess you have to tell me what they did.
Yeah, what did they do? Well, they, they, I don't really know what they did, right? So they, they got funding for a one-year program for a outdoor-themed preschool, right?
Not from Barstow. They got nothing from Barstow. The only thing they got from Barstow was, it's basically like our, our connection. It's like our connection with ARC in Whiting. We're, we're giving them one year to an open classroom space.
And so that's funded outside of the school?
They fund it. Basically taxpayers fund it. So RNESU funds it for UPK, right? So the 10 hours, and it's a 40-hour program. Parents are paying unless they get a subsidy for the rest of it.
And did that go through their board? How did that even happen?
Their board had to approve the use of them having a classroom. So it's a one-year, and it happened by them coming to several board meetings. They started by coming to public comments and questions, and it sort of rolled from there. Then they had meetings with Brenda Fleming and myself. And so then at the end of it, they had a proposal to the board, and the board granted them basically to use their facility for one year.
So that was on the, on the ballot as a town item and not as a?
Not a ballot. They didn't, Barstow's not paying anything.
Well, who, you said taxpayers are paying for it, so they must have.
Like, like RNESU tax, like you pay for everybody's 10 hours of universal pre-K just because you're a resident of Pittsburgh. Everyone in the state of Vermont does. You don't get to vote on it. The state of Vermont says you must do that. So there's, Barstow is not incurring any additional costs, none, zero.
So if a kid stays beyond the 10 hours because it's a daycare?
The parents are paying for it unless they have a subsidy.
But they also applied for subsidies so they can, they're approved.
Right, if the parent, right, if the parents can get, qualifies for subsidy, then the subsidy will help them.
Yes, the work on, the work on this program is 100% by the Forest Pre-K and those two women who were creating a new program. I mean, they're months and months probably of work into creating this.
And is that a model that could be effective elsewhere?
Potentially, that's why we, I mean.
Can we invite them in, too?
Because we need it where?
I don't know. I, I mean, I think preschool is a huge problem statewide, right? 10 hours doesn't work for a lot of parents, right? So I think, you know, that's a huge need statewide. And if there's a program from a sister board that might be a model that we could use to fix that problem, I'd like to hear from them at least, just understand how they did it.
I guess I'm confused because, so are you saying it's because these kids can stay longer than the 10 hours that they're there for daycare as well? Is that the piece that you, because, I mean, most of our kids, I think, for, are able to attend most of our preschool programs that we have in district. So it's not like we don't have access to lots of preschool programs within OVUU.
But programs that, that are extended?
We, we have Whiting.
We have Whiting that's extended, that's true. And we did try to get an extension, another extension for Pittsburgh's.
We did actually increase every program's hours this year.
Right.
Yeah. But I mean, it's still, I guess really, the end goal ultimately would be to get it to the point where we have a full-time preschool program.
For a three, three and four-year-old.
Well, the only thing I, the only thing that I would say to that is, first of all, we, we meaning RNESU, but also we meaning Barstow, the superintendent, everyone is very invested in how the Forest Pre-K does in general, right? And it's a completely different program, a different idea, and we have our eye on the partnership. So if it's the board's will, we're happy to come back and report how, how that's going. The only thing that I would say is, universal pre-K is a huge legislative topic this year. And if they end up rolling out mandatory full-day four-year-old programs, and no one's going to be adding programs, we're just going to be scrambling to keep all of our four-year-olds sort of in. And then how's that going to ripple and hurt the three-year-olds? So you as an OV board, all boards will get plenty of information on that because that's going to be impactful to budgets, right? That will be another place where the state might say, hey, here's another unfunded mandate. Have fun.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so we'll.
Right in time for the Esser Cliff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what?
Since it's just barely started, I don't know that we want them to come talk to us until we know that it's successful.
Yeah, well, yeah, I just think.
No, but there's the topic, right?
Right, it's a topic, sure.
So if legislation is happening and there's a way to collaborate with outside resources to be able to make, to meet the demand of the legislation by collaborating with somebody who offers services, I just wonder, how, how does that impact? Like if the Whiting program can be 40 hours and we're paying for 10, you're saying that legislature might mandate that we have to pay for all 40?
Only for four-year-olds.
For four-year-olds.
For four-year-olds.
But then the three-year-olds, right?
But then that wouldn't be a partnership anymore, right? Like so.
Right, but that's what I wonder. But there's an argument for partnering.
Our staff is only covering the 10 hours. And at the Forest Pre-K, we are only paying their staff to cover the 10 hours.
The 10 hours, but that's what I mean. I think there's a partnering and a, and a case that could be made for partnering with organizations rather than mandating 40.
Which we have tried many times with Pittsburgh. And I mean, we were lucky with, with Whiting to find one.
Well, this program is in the school still, though, right? I mean.
So is Whiting. I mean, Whiting is in the school.
No, it's not.
But I mean, the other programs that were explored were not like, in Pittsburgh, it wasn't going to be at Voltherup.
And, and they didn't, they didn't initially want to be in Barstow. They actually wanted to be in the Grange or the Hall, and the town said no. And Barstow had a classroom. So like I said, it's brand-new, they're just week one in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I'd like to kind of follow it, I guess.
Sure.
I want to follow up something Natalie said about funding. And I don't know if this is a question for the administration or something that's going to come up as a goal. But Natalie is 100% correct about what I was saying about buying the sky electricity stuff. It's not going to work unless there's some kind of public and private partnership, that in particular. But, but thinking about ways to do things outside of the tax revenues, opportunity challenge, whatever you want to call it, it's, it's, I think it's something we need to consider, particularly as it appears that budgets are going to be tightening in the next year. And who knows how far I'll pass that. So I would like to, without, you know, doing anything illegal, be, be able to think, it might be useful for the board to be able to explore opportunities like that. And I, I don't know how to begin.
I think your alternative ed program that started, that is now run by Mrs. Roberts. Mrs. Roberts running that?
She's worked, wait, no, it's a, no, it's Melissa Hoyer and a new teacher, Katie somebody.
All right. So they now have kids that come in and check in in the morning and then go out to work somewhere. And what we need to do is find more partners like that. I think that's what they're trying to do. We are dealing with some old blood where we sent kids out and it didn't work. And so they don't want to work with us anymore. We need to work through that stuff so that we can get more kids out there that can, you know, hopefully find a job and continue that job beyond high school.
Yeah, I'm thinking more in terms of, could we get a, you know, $50,000 raised from various local businesses to create an, you know, XYZ program? Because I think that may be required in the future if we're going to kind of actually dream big.
Okay. I think we need to think bigger than local businesses. I'm just, from the college perspective, we do a lot of MOUs and mutual sharing agreements between different schools across states and regions. So you swap resources instead of requiring somebody to pay. I don't know, it's just something to think about, like, I, I hear you. I think that we do need to think about other opportunities outside of just our little tiny region because we don't have a lot of money, and I don't think the local businesses do either.
Not a lot of them. Okay, so back to goals. Because we could talk about this all night and into next week. So in the meantime, let's come up with some goals that we would like to work on throughout the year. And if one of those is to. What was that? I'm sorry.
Air conditioning in the library.
Um, yeah. Eric, yeah, 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 yeah.
Goal one.
Yeah. You got to talk to the facilities person, that's Brenda.
Her office is cool, by the way.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Put her office into the corner of the library here.
We had, we had the chance to get it all for free with the spring outside, but the state said we were going to kill fish if we did it.
Can, can you give me an example of a goal that you've had previously? I just want to hear the wording of how you're setting your goals, how wide or how narrow.
Well, I don't know, they can be as, as wide or as, as narrow as you want. I, I think one of the goals needs to be financial. We usually have a financial goal, and that's the one that's easiest to my mind. But because we have the Esser Cliff coming, I think we have to figure out how to make sure that kids get everything they need with less. I mean, that's, that's essentially what we're going to be working towards here.
But that, that goes hand in hand with collaborations with outside resources.
Sure, absolutely. So, you know, that could be one goal. The second goal, you know, there's been a lot of talk about communications with families and how to communicate with them and, you know, engage other than when they're mad at us or mad at the school and come and talk to us. But as we all know, it's very hard to get them to engage with us when they're not mad at the school or at us. So trying to find them at their, their places of where they are, maybe. Although we've tried that, and they, they kind of, you know, make a big circle around us, yeah.
This goes directly to that. I had a goal, but then I was like, oh, maybe we already have it, and I'm just not aware of it. Do we have a long-term vision plan that the board has created for the school district?
Yep, we did. That one, well, we did, that was yes, and then COVID happened. So essentially, it was to build a middle school. We wanted to have a middle school model. We wanted to build a middle school, either attach it to this building or build it in the.
That's not quite what I mean. That's like a long-term facilities plan.
Well, it was part of.
We talked about, Lori and I have said it, and all of the administrators also because we have a very new, I mean, Debbie Alexander was our longest-standing principal. Now she's at central office, so the next principal has three years tenure. That's a very new group of school leaders, so.
Which is Vicki?
It is Vicki. And so the last time the mission and vision work was done was during the merger. And, and then COVID hit, and we know that things are just different in our world. So I had said to Lori and also the principals that I think it would be fabulous if the board and the school sort of recommitted to some mission and vision work.
I think that's the way to get people on board, too. Because we're, I feel like we're not doing what the point of policy governance is a lot of the time, which we're kind of doing the worst of all situations where we don't have a long-term vision necessarily to look to for our policies where we're saying, yeah, in 10 years, here's like the idea of like a postcard to ourselves, this is what our district looks like. I feel like we're so stuck on dealing with the moment issues. And I'm not saying. And I'm not saying those things aren't important, but I feel like we don't have a pathway to make those moment's issues fit into a bigger vision. So like with Kevin saying dreaming big and Natalie saying go outside of like, expand our network. I feel like those things make sense if we have a long-term vision. I would love to see us have that long-term vision that's updated and current. And like having a bunch of new administrators, I think is great. It's like new blood, maybe, yeah, more.
New energy.
It does give us an opportunity to talk about issues, right?
Yeah, well, and I think it's a great year for it, too, right? Because we have this financial cliff that we're hitting, so we can kind of look at everything holistically. Probably a vision will present itself.
I have, I, so do each of the principals have visions themselves? So I think we should hear what it is that they see needs to happen in the schools. And then we prioritize those somehow, right?
Because. I'd say the opposite, right? I'd say, yeah, and it's part of, it's part of why we're doing the monthly community forums and monthly staff forums this year because we need to hear what they want, right? They are, in fact, the stakeholders. They are our consumers. We want to hear from students. Our principals generally follow the direction and the vision from central office. And then they tweak it in a way that works for their schools.
I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know what's necessarily needed in every school to come up with a vision that's applicable or.
We don't write it alone.
Yeah, but so hearing, hearing from them about what are the needs and the priorities. But I, they would be, yeah. Most schools also have a school vision statement. So you'd have the supervisory union, the district one, and then a school vision statement. No one really has their set anymore.
Historically, 32 years ago, the state would lead us in focus forum groups with the stakeholders, the principals, and we would develop that vision together. And it would last, and then from there, you'd create your plan, your work plan, and it would last you five to, five years. And then you had to refresh it every five years. That process has gone.
No, they're bringing it back.
And they're bringing it back, but it's, I'd rather do it grassroots from us, right?
And I mean, that's basically how they got the Vermont portrait of a graduate is getting all of those people in the room to say, this is what we want our 18-year-olds to leave schools with.
I remember meetings at the Lilac Inn to develop the mission and vision of RNESU.
Well, we should be, well, we should be thinking beyond each individual school, right? Like, I mean, so say, you know, when it comes budget time, we say, okay, during COVID, we got all this extra money. We hired this widget painter and they had a three-year contract. And now we can't afford to keep them, but boy, we really wish we had someone to paint these widgets, right? And then we say, okay, well, how can we save $80,000 somewhere else creatively where we can hire that person back, right? I don't know. It may be like, you know, we get this grant to buy electric buses and then we save that much on diesel. Or, I don't know. I don't know where the money's going to come from. But I think that's kind of the stuff we need to be thinking about.
That's a big goal, and that can take a whole year developing that vision.
Yeah. Well, the mission and vision, as much as the board, this board would like to be involved in it. So RNESU has the mission and vision statements. And then OVUU could make their own. Well, our mission and vision statement is supposed to be the first policy in our policy governance, which is what we want our kids to be able to do.
Is that our end goals?
Yeah, it's our ends policy, yeah. Yeah, it's the same thing, you know. So.
So Lori, I hate, I know you hate delays on these things, but I found tonight's discussion pretty stimulating. Formulating it into goals.
It's the heat, Kevin. It's the heat.
Yeah, it must be, because.
Men of the gray matter.
Wow.
But to try to whip up three or four, you know.
All right, so how about I put all of this into like a spreadsheet of some sort and I send it out to you?
Yes.
And you guys think about it?
Thank you, yes.
I think so, too.
I think we should, yeah, try to prioritize.
You know, we'll see if we can actually pull this together for our second meeting, which we do have some presentations.
Brief ones.
Yeah. And then we may have some time after to really discuss what our, what we would like to see our goals be for the year. The sooner we can do that, the better. It'll drive where we head from this point forward.
I have a question. Can you tell us what our goals were last year?
We didn't really have any.
We didn't have any?
No.
So we achieved all of them.
Yeah, I know, but so, ever since COVID, we really haven't had that discussion as to what are our goals. Our goal was to get out of COVID.
Survive.
Right, survive. I mean, that's.
But this is interesting, right? I think you guys are feeling like the beginning of something post-COVID, right? Like finally, we can say, we're there. And I think it's a kind of a nice moment for renewal.
Yeah. Okay, back to the agenda since we're going to put that to our next thing. Let's see. I thought we'd get out of here early tonight. Ah, look at me. All right, let's see. So that was supposed to lead us into our annual work plan, actually. Global ends monitoring presentations, board monitoring reports, board PD. So let's do this for all of that. Since you want to really think about what your goals are, I think that's going to work into our work plan. So think also about what you want for professional development this year. You know, do you want to hear from social emotional people? You know, like Joanna Breakley came in a couple of years ago and talked to us. She might be another one to come back and talk to our newest board members and give us a refresher. And think about what other kinds of PD you want.
When do we do this PD?
Whenever. It's whenever you guys want. But if you want professional development this year, we need to get that into place now.
In addition to the meetings.
Yeah, in addition. It would be at our meetings.
At our meetings.
So I'd have to, we'd want to put those in there. Okay?
That was one takeaway from the last meeting, the presentation, is that we could do that within the rules of open meeting laws. We could have trainings that are not at the meetings and not necessarily use the meeting time. That's already so limited.
However, how, do you want to do a third meeting?
Uh, five or six.
Okay, five or six third meetings?
Two in the morning before.
All right. All right, I'm just checking, you know. So, but yeah, we could still do that, yeah. And the reason we did that one off the books was because we didn't want, a lot of that stuff is, we don't want our positions with our lawyer to be public.
But we could open it up to, people could do professional development, not at the meetings and elsewhere, and doesn't have to be everybody.
Sure.
There could be that option.
Yep. And then you could come back and tell us all about it. Okay. Let me know where you go and I'll put it on the calendar. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, but yes, we could do that. All right, so community engagement, board presence at school open houses. If you look at Kristin's superintendent's report, she has posted all of the open houses for all of the schools this fall. I'm not sure when the first one is. I can't remember. But anyway, it would be nice if we had a board presence other than just the parents that are board members. And if you don't have a lanyard with your picture on it that denotes that you're a board member, let me know. We'll get you one. Just need a picture of you.
I don't have one. I don't have one.
All right, well, if you want one, send me an email and we'll get you one. But you also have to send me a picture of your face.
None of our dogs.
Right, and not with a hat over your face or anything like that, so.
What if we did a sign-up sheet for that?
Ah, it's too, no, just, I go to all of them. You should just go. It's much more, if you can make it, go. It's nice to be able to pop in and talk to teachers and talk to parents without. Open board seats. So as I noted this morning, earlier today, Derek has moved out of Brandon, so his seat is now available. And Eric Pearson has bought a business in Rutland, and he did not feel that he could continue to give the board his full attention. So he has also resigned. So we will put it out unless you don't want to. We will put it in the paper and other various public forums to let people know that we are looking for a Pittsburgh and a Brandon board member to fill the vacancy until March, unless you would prefer we leave them vacant until someone can run for them in March. Your choice.
I think we should put an ad out.
All right, so raise your hands if you think we should put an ad out. Okay, and those who think we should leave it vacant? Okay, all right, so we'll put an ad out. We will ask for those to be back for us to look at at our first meeting in October. And so that means that hopefully that new board member will join us for the second meeting in October. Okay?
Your names to you by first meeting?
Yeah. Yep, and letters of interest, I guess.
Do you want to recruit this time?
I don't know.
I do want to take this time to publicly recognize them for their years of service and for their willingness to be on the board. So we should all give them a round of applause. Thank you, Derek and Eric.
I have a question. That's Derek-adjacent. Who's supposed to be taking care of orders now? Wasn't he doing it most of the time?
I did it today, so. It's supposed to be anybody. Anybody can do it.
Yeah, but then it's like, okay, should I drive up there if everyone?
So if you see it and if you know that, if you want to, just call and make sure that nobody's been there yet. And then they'll make sure that it's there for you. Yes, that would be a pain if you drove all the way and found out someone had signed them.
Yeah.
So, but just call.
Yeah, it does seem like it's an issue, yeah.
No, what, did she email three times? Yeah, so.
In worst case, I'd bring them to the board meeting if no one signs.
Right, but we do want bills to go out or payments to go out, so we should do that as soon as possible.
Should we, should we, I don't know, come up with some kind of like a sign up ahead of time thing or?
Doesn't work. I mean, I would love to say it does. I feel like I'm a Debbie Downer here, but, you know, we've done that before. We said, okay, these three people will sign, and then they didn't for various reasons. And then, you know, so it's really whoever can get there. That's why we opened it up to everybody. If you want to say that, if you want to say that you'll do it for the whole month of October, then we'll just know that nobody else is going to go in. So, you know, that could happen.
And not against something like that.
But I still think we should allow anybody to sign, just in case.
What are the hours?
They're open from eight to four.
So people are there way earlier and way later.
Or way later, because I got there at 4:03 and I was able to get in today. All right, let's see. Visbit and VHI annual meetings. The meeting is Friday, October 27th this year at Lake Maury Inn in Fairleigh. We do need to have someone who will vote by proxy. I plan on attending that, so if you want to vote me as your proxy, I'm happy to do it. So, but I need someone to make that motion.
I move to have you vote as our proxy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. RNESU board update. I can tell you that there isn't one because we haven't met yet, so we're not meeting for another two weeks. So we'll have that update after we meet. We'll probably be talking about mission and vision. So superintendent's informational report.
Sending Melinda the notes. Okay, um, I feel like there's a lot. So we are doing, because we also believe that we sort of are disengaged from the community, that we are going to be holding monthly community forums. The first one is September 21st. It will focus on safety in our schools. It'll be hybrid, so it'll take place at 5 o'clock here at Otter Valley. But we will also have an online option if folks want to dial in and join. And then we will also take requests for topics in the future. So we encourage folks, if they have ideas. Website updates, I encourage you, if you haven't, to go to our new website. There have been a ton of updates and it's looking fabulous. You will now find significant updates related to safety. So there is now a section about threat assessment, what it looks like, what happens if something happens in our school. We'll share all of that with families. Chain of command, we have a new family engagement calendar. So you can go on and see what's happening at Lothrup, what's happening at Nashabie, what's happening at Otter Valley, much, much more. Want to draw attention, which I think also came in your packet, a picture of folks. These are the folks that we celebrated their contributions for last school year. Lothrup Jed Pauls and Emily Swett, OV Christine Roberts and Shar Westing, Nashabie Sue Dyer and Jamie DeForge, OCA Christine Landon and Jill Duty. Then we have two RNESU reps and the two teachers who go to UVM in November for the Outstanding Educator. Our Jed Pauls counselor at Lothrup and Sarah Gallagher, who's a Barstow middle school teacher. Just want to draw your attention to, and as these things sort of come down the pike, I'll bring them back up again. But there are quite a few pieces of legislation that we really have our eye on for this calendar year. The School Construction Aid Task Force, they're now supposed to cover 100% of remediation and removal and any potential costs on the other end. We do have school attorneys involved if it doesn't end up working out that way. And we do have, most of our schools are scheduled for this school year. Educator workforce development, the state is working pretty hard. We know that you just can't find people. So one of the things that they put in place are new teachers and current teachers won't have to pay for their teacher license through 2029. And which, that is expensive.
Yeah, that's right.
And they're also looking at some grants to support educator affinity groups. Act One, by the way, just for your information, continues our authority till the end of this school year to hold board meetings completely virtually without someone in person. We wouldn't necessarily do that, but in a special meeting, if something happened and you just need to get folks together in like a day or so, that still persists for this year. Pre-K education and childcare, Act 76, that's going to be a big one. And it's not only expanding pre-K education for four-year-olds. It also is talking about expanding subsidies to parents to support beyond pre-K. So that will be a big deal for taxpayers and school districts. School safety, Act 29. So you'll see this year, two policies. One is, you should have all gotten, when you go to visit schools now, you have to give your ID the first time. There's a Raptor system that takes people's IDs. It's basically an expedited background check. So Act 29 relates to four basic tenants. The two are policies for visitor and access management and our emergency drills. And I talked about this a little bit at the end of last school year. And we'll talk about next month when we really do a deep dive into safety. The drills this year, they're mandatory options-based drills, and that's scary for a lot of parents and a lot of teachers and a lot of kids. Depending on the age level of your students, you'll have to have conversations with them about, okay, so what would we do if there was an active intruder in our schools? And kids would need to, in real time, have conversations with teachers about how they might respond. Those two options-based drills, which are mandatory, school principals also have to record those drills and they have to make sure that parents get notified 48 hours in advance because you don't want kids and parents to be surprised by that piece of information. And then the other piece of Act 29 will be the behavioral threat assessment. The state of Armon is basically taking over for schools who in the last couple of years have designed their own processes. The state is now saying, we are going to tell you who needs to be on your team, what it needs to look like, and here are the hoops that you need to jump through. So that should be in place by the end of this year. Universal meals continue for this year. There's a new piece of legislation about suicide prevention.
Kristin, can I ask you a question? The Raptor system, will that expedite people being able to volunteer at the school? So you won't have to go?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
The only thing you'd still have to fill out would be the application, like anything that you'd have to do. But yeah, you could go into your school and they'll clear you.
That's great.
Yeah. So OV facilities update, just for your information, the OV Football Club is working to determine the feasibility of adding lights to Markowski Field to support 25 evening events each year. If feasible, they will likely come to you with a request to authorize them to begin a capital campaign for the project. There is a meeting scheduled for just next week, I think, next week or two weeks, with OV Facilities Athletics, Brenda, myself. And they will be talking about the Markowski Field proposal and also the OV locker rooms because we have at this point gotten information back from the construction company or from the architects, and we're currently looking at bids. Was a water issue at OC. Was a water issue at OCA, which I believe is resolved as of today. This was related to the flooding. So basically, OCA had a contaminant level that was above the maximum amount. School wasn't in session, but it required us to post boil water notices. As of the 31st, we were still providing students with bottled water and water bubble access. The E. coli was gone, but we still needed to flush the well and the workforce shortage also hits the water guys. So we were just waiting for them to come back to school to clear us. And then just sort of the last things besides the open houses, which you'll see on there, just for your information. And we talked about what sort of were our goals. Here are sort of our global goals for the year, and I share this with all faculty at our opening in-service. We're really focusing on safety and well-being, student readiness and organizational excellence and optimization. And there's a bunch of different things sort of within that. And I think that's it for me. I will say though, on Friday, in the superintendent's update, we will have videos and pictures from the opening days in all of our schools. It was a great opening and the video is looking fabulous. And I think that's it.
Questions for Kristin?
Was the Brandon PD able to hire an SRO? No? And will we at some point be getting an update on the bathroom, locker, room?
Yes, after the meeting. So if it's, if it's ready for the next meeting, we'll have it there, if not the very first meeting of October. Yeah, because there's obviously, we'll want to share that ahead of the budget as well.
And a new season of superintendent series on YouTube or...
Friday. Friday.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so our next, our next meeting is September 19th here, 6:00 PM. Hopefully it'll be a little cooler or bring your own fans. And there is no need for executive session, so for those of you who would like to adjourn, please do so. Nah, we, I kind of did for you, it's too hot.